Ending of the year, wow. Oh, hello.
I would like to nominate Marilyn to do a second term and Allison.
Ann, turn you on.
It won't stay down. It keeps going.
I nominate the current slate to do a second year.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Do we need a roll call vote on that? Okay.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Holkamp?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Chairable?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Your turn's coming. Do we have a determination of legal notice?
I'll add an in properly.
Thank you, do we have a director's report?
So, obviously, Mr. Schultz is sitting right next to me here, but we're going to reserve any comments we have till we get to matters from staff, so we can go ahead and keep going with the agenda.
Okay. Matters from public, the planning commission welcomes participation in commission meetings. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the commission that are not on the posted agenda and items which have not already been considered by the commission. No action will be taken. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the planning commission for an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the regular calendar. And that is item 6A, presentation from local housing partners, community development corporation and rural community housing development corporation. So, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, go on up to the podium. So, thank you, we have with us here Todd Crabtree from the CDC and he's going to start us off.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you for the invite. My name's Todd Crabtree. The CDC is the county's housing authority. Programs, some primary programs we work with that people are familiar with are Housing Choice Voucher, which is a Section 8 program, that's how most people know it. Veterans Assistance Housing Program called BASH, that's a mainstream housing program which is for non-elderly people with disabilities. There's a program for family unification called FUP, and there's also a program for people who need case management in cooperation with housing called permanent supportive housing. I was asked to come here, I think primarily to talk about how, what we can do to help promote more housing, so that's the topic I was planning on talking about. The main thing we do that works to promote housing is primarily what's called project-based vouchers. We take the rental assistance programs we have, which are vouchers, and we commit them to a project in development. That secures financing for that development project so that they can go out and get financing for construction. So, examples would be PEP Housing, if you're familiar with PEP Housing's project, which was near Grace Hudson. That project, we put in 10 veterans vouchers to help them go out and get the financing to complete the project. We've also put in 25 vouchers towards Ryan's project at Ora Creek, which is over on Brush Street, and 25 vouchers for a project in Fort Bragg being developed by Danko. And those are the main activities we do to help promote housing. Sure.
Can you get all the vouchers you need, you know, as the projects come on, can you just get new vouchers for each?
Great question, no, we actually, we get so much money allocated for Mendocino for a year, because it's kind of a national program. So, right now, we get between $550,000 and $600,000 a month that we then use for rental assistance. And out of that, we can take 20% of that and use it for project-based vouchers. So, we assist, right now, with the voucher programs, 900 households. So, 20% can be committed to project-based vouchers.
Thank you.
Sure. And the other thing we do is we also work with the county and the cities in the past to sometimes write, but also administer housing-related grants such as CDBG. I don't know if you guys are familiar with CDBG programs, home programs, we've done that in the past. Help with either owner-occupied rehab, sometimes they're development grants, sometimes they're first-time homebuyer grants. And then we also, ourselves, we will often buy and rehab affordable housing stock. Like, last year, we bought two housing apartments just north of Ukiah on Symphony Hill and Tanya, and right now, we're working on an acquisition rehab project in Fort Bragg for a 55-unit place. That's a quick summary. I wanted to make it quick in case there were questions, I didn't want to throw too much gerbil all at once, but hoping for questions.
Well, thank you for coming and presenting to us. I had a, how many vouchers do you apply for every year?
Apply for, we don't really apply for, we get an allocation.
Allocation, or how many is that?
An allocation is, well, there's the.
I mean, three, two, three-bedroom, two-bedrooms, one?
Basically, we just get an allocation of funds, and then you assist as many people as you can with that. So, the funds we get, like I said, are between $550,000 and $600,000 a month, and with that, we've been able to assist 900 families a month.
So, they're not, no longer, the federal government's no longer just saying, Mendocino County, you can have, you know, go after 20 three-bedroom vouchers? Value of three-bedroom vouchers? They don't, this fed, they changed the, they used to do it that way.
Yeah, I think.
And I think you were still at CDC when they did that.
Yeah.
That changed?
That's back.
In the 90s.
Yeah, I was going to say, back in the 90s, I think they changed in the early 2000s how they, they do kind of a block allocation now. And then they say, okay, administer and help as many people as you can with those funds.
Right.
So, yeah, they don't do it by bedroom size, and then every once in a while, they will have a notice of funding availability to apply for more special case vouchers. Not general vouchers, but like, the past year, we applied for and received mainstream vouchers, those are for non-elderly disabled. And so, we applied for those, we also applied for family unification vouchers, and we had those.
So, how many people on the program get a monthly, get, have what used to be like a voucher? How many people are subsidized on the program today?
900 households, and then another 110 in permanent supportive housing. They're kind of two silos in our minds, but together, 1,010 households every month. And we just define it as households, I don't know exact numbers as far as how many in those families.
And what's the staff of CDC now?
21. It must be same, it's been, I think it's been around 20, 21 for years.
Okay. And I have one more question. And I understand you do basically a joint sharing of getting the resources, what you shared, using voucher resources for for-profit, nonprofit development. What else is in the, what else is in the, outside of Ukiah? What other housing development is possibly in the pipeline? Is there anything? For instance, in the 4th district or 5th district of the county?
As far as connected to us, or just?
Yes. That you're involved with.
The only one we're working with, I would say, that are connected to us is Danko was trying to do a development in Fort Bragg. They're trying to secure all their funding, we have committed kind of a pre-approval for vouchers. They're, I think, applying this round for what's called tax credits and bond allocation. Hopefully, that's in March now, the end of the month, so if they get that, we'll be working with them. And there's an acquisition rehab also in Fort Bragg for walnut apartments, we're working with the developer on that one. We may be the managing general partner on that one, so there could be vouchers and tax credits associated with that one. Those are two that we're working directly.
Thank you.
I don't know if I heard you right, it's, did you say 1,000 families per month?
Total, if you add the two programs, is 1,010, and it varies from month to month. What happens is, so with that money, you have what's called rental assistance. And so, how much assistance we're providing families is dependent on their income, and then we kind of cover the gap. So, it varies a little bit month to month, so like, this month, it's 900, that next month, it might be 902, you may be able to add two more people. And the numbers, you know, they kind of go, you know, they might change two or three a month.
But that's for the entire county?
Yep.
But I mean, that just, that just seems like a lot, I mean, we don't have that many people in the county, do we? That, I mean, that's 12,000 per year, and we do this every year?
No, let me, I should clarify, 900 a month, most of those people, it's month to month, so they're staying on the program.
Okay. I couldn't see 1,000 new people every month. What are we doing here?
Yeah, what we have is probably 70% of the folks we have are what I would call long-term assistance, because they're either seniors or disabled, or both. So, they're on low fixed incomes, so they come on the programs and they typically stay on. For the 900 is, most of those are the same people, and their rotations are usually with working families, they'll come on, go off, and then new people will come on.
What would you say the turnover is? How many people do you lose each month?
The restriction rate is between 5 and 8.
5 and 8%?
Five to eight households.
Oh, five to eight households.
They'll either move off the program because they're successful, or sometimes they lose assistance because they violated the terms of the assistance.
Okay. And the Brush Street property there on the east end of Brush Street, are those filled yet?
That is, as far as I know, they're not filled, that was the one that, well, we did not put anything into that one, but that was the one that I believe was farmworker housing. That they, the assistance they received was tied to it helping house farmworkers. So, my understanding is they're having trouble finding people who qualify for the program. I believe the one, Ryan will talk about it, I don't think they're going to have any of those kind of restrictions on their property that they're building basically across the street.
Okay, and does your program do anything to help the people get off this program, or, you know, to move on? I mean, I'm sure, maybe that's not part of your program.
That's a good question, um, yeah, we, I would say not directly. I mean, we definitely encourage, especially with the permanent supportive housing, we work with the case managers to try and get people stabilized. But as far as income, no, we do not require that. As far as, you know, trying to help them find a job, no, not at this time.
Okay.
Like I said, most of the folks we work with are on fixed low incomes, the seniors or permanently disabled, so there's not many opportunities there.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
And, Madam Chair, if I could ask a question too, or make a statement. I've done U Section 8, it's been severely restricted by the federal government. I wouldn't look at it, I mean, it's a great program, and it's very much needed, but people in Todd's position have been totally constrained by the federal government. We used to be able, in my old days, put these on projects that had, that were right on the edge financially of making it and getting financed. And we could actually run the program efficiently and save money on admin, and we'd use those savings to do gap loans to make up the difference, and they've really tightened it up. I was just looking on the site where I worked, and they used to have 8,000 vouchers when I was there, starting in the 90s, they now have 5,500 vouchers. So, it's a great program, great to help fund affordable housing, but, you know, the home money's been cut back, CDBG's been cut back, home has been made so restrictive now, it's really hard. You have to have the money allocated within a year. And so, and the problem is, some of our jurisdiction, we get so little money, it takes years to save up the money for a big enough, you know, gap loan. So, it's, in defense of Section 8 folks around the world, it's been a tough world to, and lots of constraints on them now from the feds, but it's a great program. I just wish he had more flexibility in using it.
That's probably why the farmworkers' housing isn't filling up.
Yeah, well, I think you were.
Go ahead.
I'll say, yeah, that is actually one of the unfortunate situations with affordable housing, is you usually need subsidies upfront for construction and subsidies often for rental for, to help with the income flow. So, a lot of times, those subsidies have their priorities, i.e. restrictions. So, these, those folks went after funding that had a restriction that was farmworker. So, they got the housing built, but now they can't find the eligible people to actually live in the housing. And that's a problem that can come with some of the funding. They set their priorities somewhere else, and it may not really be a good fit for a community. And the other thing I want to say, getting back to what you're saying, there is actually a kind of a pilot program called Moving to Work, which is kind of addressing what you were talking about. It's actually, right now, they're only doing it with bigger housing authorities across the country, but the idea is a housing authority can have more flexibility, and some housing authorities have put like a five-year restriction on a voucher. They exempt elderly and permanently disabled, but you have your voucher for five years, and then you don't have it anymore, you have to reapply. And then they help people with job training, those kind of things, sometimes getting it back into school. So, there are programs like that, they just haven't, it hasn't expanded them to include folks like us in our size yet.
I had another question. So, if a community group who's trying to build some affordable housing, and they came to you, how would you, I guess I would say, educate them on the moves? You know, setting up a plan, what would you be able to offer them?
Okay, I think, well, first thing, I'd ask a ton of questions, because a lot of that can depend on the location and whether we're the best people to talk to. Sometimes the city's the best people to talk to, but, you know, say, let's say it was an incorporated area.
Right.
So, say Boomville, for instance.
Exactly.
We've worked with Boomville in the past, Anderson Valley Housing Association, they do farmworker housing. If they said they wanted to do something, we'd say, okay, who are you trying to help? You know, what size? And we'd, you know, start talking to them, probably have them set up a meeting with Brent, Adrian, and, you know, kind of maybe put together, help them with the financing package, maybe help them write an application if the county wants to do those kind of things. You know, so we've done those in the past where it's kind of up to the county planning department if they want us to help, but we could write a home CDBG grant to help with the construction phase. If they were eligible, we could, you know, commit project-based vouchers to that program. So, yeah, we've helped people in the past, Anderson Valley Housing Association, we've done with the county loans to help them acquire and rehab, let's see, the project on Ray's Road and the Boomville Hotel, off the top of my head. Yeah, kind of, it kind of depends on the project, so, you know, if it was like the city of Ukiah, you know, we'd work with the city, and it depends on what they wanted to do. But the main things we could help a community group with would be, yeah, help them identify potential funding sources for development, maybe help them kind of think about really what is it they want to do. Sometimes the discussion is, is affordable housing the, you know, the issue in your community, or is it just a lack of overall housing? Because sometimes it's, is the issue, the housing market isn't working, or is it the affordable housing market isn't working? Because those are actually two different discussions. So, anybody that, you know, is interested in building something, yeah, definitely would sit down and talk with them and try to figure out the best solution, then we would contact the, you know, local jurisdictions, authorities, and say, yeah, let's figure out a way to make it work.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have one question, I'm not sure if you're able to answer or not, but discussing the Brush Street properties there and the farmworker housing, and maybe you don't know the answer, but is there any way, once that's built and they're not able to get those farm housing people in there, of changing it or loosening it up, or do you know anything about that?
I don't know, Ryan, do you know what funding source they use? Do they use USDA? USDA, okay, that would be hard. USDA, that's federal, so that would take. Yeah, I mean, the problem is, because if you apply for money and you get picked over somebody else saying you're going to do something, and then you don't turn around and do it, they're going to say, well, why did we give you the money? They're either going to want to pay the money back, so you might be, I know this came up when we had a meeting with Jared Huffman, what was it now, a week and a half ago roughly? It's going to take someone like Jared Huffman probably to kind of pressure them to relax things. I would say, there may be an opportunity here because of what we've gone through with wildfires, say, we have an emergency need for housing, and see, but that is probably a decision that happens in Washington DC.
I see.
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know the questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
Thanks for the invite.
So, next, we have Ryan LaRue from RCHDC.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for taking time to hear from Todd and I about housing. I'm Ryan LaRue with Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. We're a local nonprofit affordable housing developer incorporated in about 1975 and been serving Lake Mendocino Counties since inception. Since then, we've developed and own and manage around 1,200 affordable housing units. We've built a little over 400 self-help housing, single-family homes in between Lake Mendocino and Humboldt County. And I would just say, primarily, our kind of niche here is purchasing land and developing the necessary housing for the communities that we serve. And in that, we couple the appropriate sources of funds. So, we compete at the state and federal level and the local level at times for funding to then leverage into a low-income housing tax credit application, because that's where we are really able to procure the equity needed to build a 40 or 80-unit apartment complex. And there's a lot that goes into that, and I don't know how much you really want to hear about that. So, outside of just sitting up here and rambling on, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I can speak to farmworker housing or low-income housing and moderate-income housing.
Speak to moderate-income housing a little bit.
Yeah, so, moderate-income housing, thankfully, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee has loosened up the AMI requirements, so you can still procure these tax credits based on 80% AMI, and so.
Excuse me, AMI?
Area median income.
Thank you.
And it's based on census tracts, so Mendocino County would be different than Sonoma or the Bay Area, lower, obviously. And so, we currently are looking into our pipeline to serve primarily Mendocino and Lake County with projects that could house a little higher income individuals and families. It hasn't been something that we've done historically, there, our mission and the funds available previously really dictated low and very low-income housing. So, given the need in all areas of housing, we're really looking into doing that and incorporating that into our pipeline of projects as it currently sits. So, I don't know if that answered the question somewhat.
Sometimes I feel like there are a lot, I know my own mother left, who is alive and kicking, left the community because there was nowhere to move into. You know, that there were not enough market-rate apartments that were set up well enough for an elderly person and that kind of stuff. And so, she didn't move out of her thing, which probably a lower-income family could have lived, you know what I mean?
Right.
There's, everybody gets kind of stuck.
Yes.
And that, that's one of my concerns, is that there isn't enough mobility because the rents are so high, you can't move people around too much.
Absolutely agree with that. And something we kind of advocate for is that housing for some is housing for all, very synonymous to what you just mentioned about not being options. If you have someone in a low-income subsidized unit, when they could maybe afford a market-rate unit, but there isn't one available, so that's where RCHDC advocates for. Well, we are still building low-income housing units, and it does, in fact, free up, say, if my family owned some market-rate rentals and they have a voucher on them, that person theoretically could go into a new apartment complex and free up that market-rate unit. So, while we definitely acknowledge the need in all areas, there, RCHDC as a nonprofit is somewhat limited in our ability to develop market-rate housing per se, such as Gill and Ink would. So, yeah.
I have a couple of questions, and thank you for coming. This is always really good information and updates. So, how many units are being in Mendocino County right now are you involved with developing? If any, how many, ballpark?
So, we have Ora Creek Commons Phase 1 breaking ground in later this month, and that's 40 units. And Phase 2 will be an additional 40 units adjacent to the site across the street from Brush Meadows Apartments. We have about 15 single-family homes under construction currently out on Lake Mendocino Drive, which is a part of our 58-unit single-family home subdivision. And we have plans to develop on the coast as well as in Willets. That's very pre-development, as it currently sits, we haven't found a suitable site to acquire yet. But so, yeah, that about encompasses the current pipeline for Mendocino County.
And of any of those, are you in a joint venture? Who are you in a joint venture with of the ones you just named? Ballpark, you don't have to give me everybody, but.
Well, I wouldn't say we're in an actual joint venture with anyone, we're a pretty standalone organization as a developer property. We also provide ongoing property management services, supportive services for, somewhat speaking to his concern or question earlier. We do partner, and I very much would mention and appreciate Brent, his department, Todd, his organization, as stakeholders in the game, and so, I think of us more as partners. his organization as stakeholders in the game, and so I think of us more as partners.
Right.
As Todd mentioned, we, we partnered on a project-based vouchers for Ora Creek Phase One, and so, yeah, but no, we don't typically joint venture.
Okay, okay, thank you. And just a, where's Dwayne Hill?
(laughing).
I worked, I worked with Dwayne many years ago.
Yeah, I think Dwayne just slid off the radar there. He was serving as our...
He did a good job. He did a good job.
He did a fantastic job, absolutely. He served as our broker of record for a short period of time after his retirement, and we've since ascertained our own broker internally. And so, he's, he's pretty well under the radar.
Well, yeah, he deserves the rest.
He comes and gives us his opinions from time to time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And just something else I'd like to, to touch on regarding kind of the, the issue with affordable housing from the way we see it is sometimes you get stuck in affordable housing in Section Eight. Some of our, we call them family apartments, where they're not restricted to seniors or special needs. You'll often see generations living, grandma in one unit, mom in the other, and the kid in the other. So, RCHDC's procured grants and developed a, a service coordinator position, which is fully staffed and employed and self-sustaining through our organization. And we allocate that individual to providing financial assistance, financial empowerment, really trying to get, you know, our residents involved in the community and recognize the other services that we obviously don't provide, like something RCS or the county behavioral health would, but to bridge those gaps and to help people in poverty help get out. Because it's, that's a tough, tough bridge to, to achieve by your own, so just want to speak to that a little bit.
Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, you mentioned potential projects on the coast and looking for a suitable site. Can you describe a little bit about what a suitable site looks like?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fun one. Every site seems to have its issues, but we try to basically limit our risk exposure as a nonprofit. We have, when we go into a project such as this, we put out quite a bit of capital of our own internal operating funds. So, we try to be pretty savvy about what we're investing in. Initially, that will involve an environmental scientist to review the site and pull historical records. Typically, we'll go for a Phase One environmental study report, which would dictate a lot of the potential risks, i.e. if in the 50s there was a gas station next door. He'll note that in his report. So, that would raise the question, well, we should do some further soil sampling to, to mitigate that. Because once you get down the road so far, say you've spent $200,000 trying to get this project funded, and then you find out there's DDT in the soil, and it's going to cost you a million dollars to abate the soil, well, that's a pretty big problem. So, we, we work with the geologists, the biologists, and, and appraisers that the land has to appraise for the value that you're purchasing it for. Some of the issues we encounter up in Trinity County are mine tailings. Fortunately, we don't have that issue here, but with our old orchard properties, there are risks associated with pesticides. On the coast, a lot of the suitability of a site would determine on, on where it's located, zoning applicability. Is it in the coastal zone? Are we going to get, do we think we're going to have a huge fight with respect to NIMBYism? So, we try to really mitigate that on the front end and P and B, transparent about our plans to develop. And so, yeah, I kind of ranted there a little bit. I apologize about, I'd have touched on it.
What size would be the smallest suitable site? You know, when we're looking at acreage?
Yeah, I would say half an acre.
Okay.
Willow Terrace, we were able to fit 38 units on a little under an acre. And as a, if we intend to manage the property, the real break-even point to sustain the property management side of things is 40, 30 to 40 units. If you get below that, the economies of scale don't exactly work out so great. So, yeah, about half an acre would be suitable.
And one more question. Are you still involved in sweat equities?
Yes, and so, as the Lake Mendocino subdivision is sweat equity and very much still involved, that's, it's had its issues with the, pretty much in relation to just real, general real estate market trends, but very much intend to continue doing that. We, we have a good heart or love for that program. It really helps people get out of poverty and have that homeownership and the equity in the home with no money down, so.
Did you lose very many, and maybe this is a question for Todd, also lose many units in the fires?
Our organization did not lose any units in the fires, thankfully. Not so great for others, but yeah, we, we were pretty safe on that.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if I could just add one thing that he glossed over, it's really hard to get 9% tax credits, which is a big funder of his projects. It's really hard to get 9% tax credits. There's a point system, and I disagreed with TCAC on their Tax Credit Allocation Committee does them, and they changed, Bill Paveo, I always say that to Ryan, I really would fight with him, he used to run TCAC. It's a point system. How close you are to a bus stop, how close you are to a grocery store, how close you are to a medic, medical facility. It's, and everybody gets the maximum points. And then Bill Paveo put in there, whoever subsidizes the most wins. There's a, there's a tiebreaker score. And it, it took the gap loans from, in the 90s, from 60, 50,000 in Southern California to $160,000 per apartment unit. So, it became, and then at the same time, the state took away all of our housing money through the set-aside and the tax increment financing, redevelopment was killed. And then we, so now he has to apply through HCD for home money. He, I, I really, my hat's off to him, Todd, really hard to find, even if you have a site you like, because really, what's the planning? We're the, we're the ones that give you your use permit, we're the one, rezone, general plan amendment, get the site plan through the process, and then we plan, check it. We're not builders of housing. We don't build it, that's Ryan. And we need Todd and Ryan, but boy, their hands are really tied by the state, TCAC, and SIDLAC too, is not easy to get bonds and 4% credits, really. If you ever want to be bored, I kept all my pro formas from my career, and I can show you over time the marching up of the cost. And then, as the California, I call it Uniform Building Code, they go Brent, we don't call it that anymore. It's called California Building Code because I'm old. But, you know, Mike Oliphant likes to remind me, Brent, when you started, there was one book. There's 12 now, you know, and it's, that's even more expensive. So, I don't know, I, my hat's off to them. God bless them for building more. Please find sites, we'll help you find sites.
All right.
Marilyn, I have one more.
So, one last question. Do you think in general, you know, logically it is, it seems like it would be much easier to do this in cities where there's a lot higher density, although there may be fewer sites, than to do it in more rural counties like ours, right?
Yeah, I would say that's a fair assessment, in particular...
You probably never can score high enough.
Yeah, the state and most of the funding sources available incentivize you to develop housing in more urban areas, scoring-wise, so that puts us in, as this rural community at a disadvantage. There are rural set-asides, but they're typically relatively small, so we compete against like Butte County and other northern rural communities. But the state has very much engaged in proximity to amenities and active transportation. They want houses next to BART stations and whatnot, so they're funding projects in Silicon Valley and much more so than in rural communities, unfortunately.
And I had one last thing, thought about homelessness, right? And as I was driving over here, clearly the governor's mandating, going to be mandating like a crisis in homelessness. And I, and I didn't underst, I didn't realize California has the, the most homeless population in the whole country. And so, and I know it's, it's a big issue, and it's of every county and every city right now. But do we have any sense of how we are dealing with our homeless population, other than moving them along, trying to get them unparked from where they're parking overnight and arrest? I mean, complicated issue, but is there a discussion? Is there a think tank going on in this county right now with that?
I would just say from, from RCHDC's standpoint, our primary goal in assisting the homelessness problem in, in our communities is permanent supportive housing that we build in collaboration with service providers, in collaboration with TAMI and HHSA, as they come in and provide the wraparound services to their clients who, they have to be clients of the county to be eligible for the housing. So, that kind of mitigates the people coming and going aspect. And then, in partnership with RQMC and RCS, they are more geared up to do the transitional housing or an emergency shelter. That's not really something that we're set up to have as an endeavor. So, the kind of overall bandwidth approach of that would be RCHDC focused on what we're good at and able to do is this permanent housing. We can fund it, we can set it up to be financially viable, and we, we can fund it in ways that, that don't hurt our taxpayers. I was really proud of the fact that we built Willow Terrace 100% funded with millionaire's tax funds. A lot of people are frustrated when they see homeless going into housing and someone like me can't find housing. But I would just say to that, that, you know, it's not your tax dollars or my tax dollars, it's JP Morgan Chase's capital gains tax dollars that funded that project for 20 years. So, not to go too far into that, but that, that's our, our niche, and we look to our partners and community partners to fill the gaps in that, because it's obviously, like you mentioned, a very complex issue. So...
Any other questions? I just have a comment, and I think it relates back to what Brent commented about where there was one book in the 70s or whenever you mentioned that, Brent, and now there's 12. In order to create 12, there must have been a lot of people who were involved in that. Now, there are even more people that are involved with, with running those 12. And it goes on and on. So, I really find it difficult in the state of California to even create or find affordable housing because of things like that, that just keep growing exponentially, not only with having lack of property, but with governmental agencies creating more and more obstacles, I guess it would be. So, congratulations on what you're trying to do.
It really can be a nightmare, but Brent's not too hard on us, and then we, we deal with the state and the investors, but yeah, you're absolutely right. So, we appreciate that and love serving our community.
Oh, could, sorry, come to the podium, please?
Ryan, how long does it usually take you from the time you think of our project until it's actually able to house?
Yeah, so, the question was how long it takes for us to, from conception, you know, the thought to this housing, to how long it takes to house them. And that is ebb and flow. It could be five years, but it could also be two years. It really depends on the funding source. Once we have a plan, we have a market study substantiating the need, whether or not we, you know, we get community support for it. The succession of funding sources can move very quick. Ora Creek Commons Phase One, once we got the home award through a competitive process, and then to TCAC, it was very, it was about a year and a half. So, yeah, it, it just depends on, on the sources of funds that are available. It could be difficult to scrap together enough cash in a five-year span, but then the market can change and we could look at two years, but so, yeah, it's hard, hard to say.
Well, and I think it's partly the beforehand, because I know the Brush Street area was talked about for 25 years before we ever got to actually getting the money. And, and that was more the assembling the site, figuring out all the planning on it, all that kind of stuff. And then, when there was a go-ahead, then you could go after the money.
Yeah.
And so, it is longer than we all wish it was, I think.
Yeah, and to that point, the CEO of Chip Housing up in Chico, where they're heavily impacted, obviously, by the Paradise Fire, she mentioned it would be about four years to get something going up there if it wasn't already in pre-development. So, that, that might be, you know, a fair, fair estimate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaRue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think we're now on to Item 6B. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you very much. So, Julia Ackert Krog, Chief Planner. And I just want to note that Mark Kleiser, unfortunately, he prepared all of these documents, and unfortunately, he isn't able to be here today. So, I'm going to do my best on his behalf, and I've got Jesse Davis here, too. We're going to try to fill in any gaps, as well as I want to note that the agent is here for the project, Tim Cotter, and will be available for any questions as well. So, without further ado, this is a coastal development use permit to authorize the construction and operation of a wireless communication facility consisting of a 199-foot-tall monopine with various pertinent equipment and ground equipment, including a generator and equipment cabinet for each of the carriers. And then there's other associated improvements, including establishing the, the access to the site, utilities, and also that the facility will be fenced, and it's about a 4,500-square-foot lease area. So, the site is located in the coastal zone. It's about a half-mile east of Highway One on Big Gulch Road. And I do want to note, just at the beginning of the presentation here, and it's included in the staff report, that the Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits denial on the basis of radio frequency emissions if those emissions are below the standards as determined by the Federal Communications Commission. This application has demonstrated conformance with the Federal Communications Commission standards. So, additionally, we did evaluate the project for consistency with the Mendocino County Wireless Communication Facilities Development Guidelines. Even those, those guidelines are not currently adopted within the coastal zone. And given that this site is in the coastal zone, those aren't necessarily applicable or mandated at this time. But it is, because we expect that they will be adopted in the future, we have been evaluating projects for consistency with those. So, the parcel that we're looking at is a 65-acre parcel, and it's classified as forestland per the Mendocino County General Plan, and it's compatible with the general plan with the granting of a coastal development use permit. The parcel is zoned timberland production, and the proposed project is considered a conditional use with the granting of this use permit, and is in conformance with all other development standards, such as zoning setbacks, lock coverage, et cetera, and it's not going to affect the intended timber-growing use of the parcel. Now, since this is in the coastal zone, we do need to evaluate it for consistency with the local coastal program. So, with regards to visual resources, this site is not located within an area that's designated as highly scenic, so therefore, it's not subject to those highly scenic area policies. It will be visible just momentarily as you're traveling along Highway One, but the parcel is a densely forested area and provides a natural backdrop for the proposed monopine. And the design of the tower being a monopine also helps to obscure its sort of visibility from any sort of public view shed. There are conditions of approval that are recommended that will ensure that the project has no impact on visual resources, including how those monopine branches are attached, how far down the tower they will extend. And I do want to note that there were some conditions revised in the memorandum that was sent out with the packet and is available online. And also noting that the staff report mistakenly mentioned the aesthetic conditions as mitigation measures, but they are actually not. Those are just conditions of approval. With habitats and natural resources, there is a freshwater emergent wetland that's approximately 30 square feet in size, and it's located on the west end of the access road. So, as you enter towards the facility, you will pass by that. It's approximately halfway between the site entrance and where the development will occur. The wetland is located outside of the area proposed for ground disturbance, and therefore, it will not be impacted. However, we did recommend a mitigation measure, which would require that the applicant submit final plans demonstrating protection of the wetland during construction. Additionally, there's conditions about best management practices during any sort of earth-moving activities. With hazards management, there's no associated faults, bluffs, landslides, erosion, or flood hazard with the subject parcel, but still there's standard conditions that are required that address some of the potential concerns, such as fire hazard. Seismic, as I said, there, it is not within a mapped fault zone. There's no 100-year flood plains on the parcel. The parcel is in a high-fire hazard area, and referrals were sent to both CAL FIRE and the South Coast Fire District. CAL FIRE did respond, stating that at this time, the applicant is not required to meet the state fire safe regulations. However, at the time, building permits for the project are submitted, they would need to complete and meet all conditions of appro- are submitted, they would need to complete and meet all conditions of approval for a state fire safe clearance application. Staff has recommended a condition that addresses that. The South Coast Fire Protection District, it's noted in the staff report that they did not provide comment, but actually, we discovered this morning that they did provide comment and actually a letter of support for the project. With regards to grading erosion and runoff, there's going to be the 4,500-square-foot of ground disturbance where the compound is located in order to accommodate both, and including road construction. So that's, there's the compound, and then there's the road construction that'll be necessary as well. And trenching for underground utilities, all of that is incorporated into the approximately 4,500-square-foot of ground disturbance that's anticipated. There's conditions of approval recommended to ensure that best management practices are employed during any sort of construction to prevent any potential impacts or hazards. With regards to archaeological resources, there was a survey completed for the project, and it was accepted by the Archaeological Commission on November 13 of 2019. There were no sites identified, and so staff is just recommending the standard discovery clause be applied for if anything is unearthed during construction, they halt construction, contact our office, and would then study that. With regards to groundwater resources, since the proposed development does not require the use of water or septic, there was also a no comment response received from our Division of Environmental Health. We have no potential concerns or concerns about any impacts related to the development of this project on groundwater resources. In terms of transportation and circulation, the parcel is currently accessed off of Big Gulch Road. This section that this site is accessed off of is actually not part of the county road system, though a portion of Big Gulch Road is county road. So it is, Big Gulch is the county maintained, and from its intersection with Highway 1, and then for about 4/10 of a mile, and this site is just beyond that. Conditions for an encroachment permit are recommended for any work that's required to be conducted within the county rights of way, but we're not necessarily anticipating that that's going to be necessary. The project is located about four miles southeast of Ocean Ridge Airport, and as such, it is not within the airport compatibility zone, and so therefore we did not have any concerns about air navigation or any potential hazards to the airport that's in that zone. Public access, since this parcel is east of Highway 1, we are, this application is not subject to public access findings required by the local coastal program, and as such, there's no impact. And with environmental protection, we did prepare an initial study, which was included in the packets, as well as posted online. And due to some of the potential impacts to wetlands that could result from the project, a mitigation measure was recommended, and therefore a mitigated negative declaration is recommended for your adoption. And I do want to note that there were several phone calls received from the public regarding Osprey being spotted on the parcel. And if you'll see in the packet and posted online, there was information from the applicant about Osprey, and there are conditions recommended when ground disturbing activities can and cannot occur, in addition to if surveys are required prior to any ground disturbing activities. And so that should address any of those concerns related to Osprey. And then finally, as you had in your packet, there was the revised memorandum distributed, which had revisions to a couple conditions of approval, and there was a revised resolution included in that packet. So I am available for any questions you may have, but that really concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Of course, Diana.
Yeah, sorry. Right, it happens to be in my district. So the question I have is, in the illustrations, right, the first 50 feet have, are the top 200 feet, let's, or let's call it 199, plus or minus there. So it shows that the top 50 feet kind of show the satellite, or the receivers. My question, on the first 150 feet, is that pole going to have tree branches, too? It's not going to be as denuded as in this picture on page 11 in my package?
So there are the revised conditions, if you see, and let me just make sure I don't butcher it. It is condition seven, and this talks about unless amended by a new use permit or an amendment to this permit, the antenna rate shall not exceed greater than eight feet from the center of the monopine, and faux branches may extend up to 23 feet in order to conceal the antennas. And let me just look here. I believe we put a condition that required that they would begin, yeah, so here it is, number 10, it's 10B, and it says that the branches of the monopine shall be attached at such a height that ensures no part of the monopine trunk is visible to the public when not on the project's site. So there will be a portion that remains uncovered, but we're ensuring that we're going to look at the surrounding vegetation and make sure that you cannot see any portion of that pole from anywhere other than on the actual property.
Oh, okay. So because there's other trees?
That's correct, yes.
Is what you're saying. That's kind of in, let's say, from public access, view shed.
Exactly, from Highway 1 or something.
Yeah, right, that, okay.
So it won't be visible, and they do need to maintain that for the life of the project.
And so the part that is visible, they'll screen?
Correct.
With a typical screening of faux branches.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question.
Any other questions for staff? Then we'll hear from the applicant or the agent. Please come to the podium and state your name.
My name's Tim Cotter. My company is Cali.
Do you like me to just give a brief narrative on the project or respond to questions?
I think probably just, I think it's been pretty clear, so I think probably responding to questions if we have any questions for the applicant.
I don't, oh, I do. How many people are, do you think, the, going to be benefit from this tower?
Our estimation is about 8.1 square miles will receive service, approximately 1,089 individual parcels, in which we project that there's approximately 1,500 people living. And there's about 4,000 average daily trips on that section of Highway 1.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? You got off easy.
I did.
Thank you.
It doesn't always work out that way.
Good to come behind housing.
I do want to point out also, thank you very much, Julie, that was very well done. I do want to point out, one thing was left out. Both Verizon and AT&amp;T have already committed to locate on the site, so this is a coordinated co-location.
Excellent, we love hearing that.
From Day 1, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cotter.
Julia, the only issue I have, and I know there's probably not a whole lot we can do, but the idea of having to get a coastal development permit 20 years from now to take a tree down that is impacting the tower is ridiculous. There should be some type of waiver to, for something like this, but anyway.
Well, and so I will say, if folks are not aware, actually, back in, I think it was September, Brent Schultz was designated, or the Director of Planning and Building Services, was designated by the Board of Supervisors as the county authorized reviewer of less-than-three-acre timber conversion exemptions. So any time a request is coming through for tree removal, particularly on timber production land, we are looking at that. And if we are able to exempt a certain level of tree removal, we certainly try to work with the applicant on that. But there's always concerns when there's sensitive resources or potential for them, and ensuring that those operational conditions are met for, such as if there was an Osprey nest or something like that.
Right, but I mean, that, the forester would be responsible for that when he actually submitted the permit. But anyway, and because it's in the coastal zone, it's a whole different set of rules.
It is, and I do want to just let the commission know that one option that often doesn't come in front of this body is when you have what's considered an immaterial amendment to a coastal development use permit or a coastal development permit. And what we do is, if the applicant requests amendment, we look to see whether or not it alters any conditions of approval for a project. Otherwise, we can work with our director and make a determination of that being an immaterial change to the underlying permit. And after we give public notice to adjacent landowners, the permit can then become effective.
Okay, that, that sounds better. Thank you.
And if I may, through the chair, one thing I would like to note additionally is that this item also was brought before the Walala Municipal Advisory Committee as well, and it received a four-to-one vote in support. And also, this application in particular received approximately five letters of support from institutions, including the South Coast Fire Protection District, the North Sonoma County Fire Protection District, Ocean View Estates, the Coast Life Support District, as well as the Mendocino County Sheriff. And I thought that was important to note in terms of letters of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other questions for staff, the applicant? The applicant's gone. Any, are there any members of the public who wish to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And discussion for commission members, I do have one comment in the resolution on page 1, and this is on the memorandum as well. So it's the updated copy, item number 2 on page 1, second to the last line, utilities will be extended to the site, and drainage has, it says B, I think that should be Ben considered.
You are correct, it should be Ben.
Okay, so if that correction could be made to the resolution, then I'll sign it.
So your motion, if somebody is entertaining a motion, would just be the resolution as amended at today's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, since it's in the 5th district, I'll make that motion. I motion to approve U-2019-0017 telespan communication as amended. Resolution of the Planning Commission, County Mendocino, State of California, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and granting a coastal development use permit for 199-foot-tall wireless communication tower.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, and I apologize, I did miss something I just want a clarification of. On page 2 of the summary, under the project description, I'm a little unclear, it says the workers will visit the site approximately once a month, the generator will be turned on once a week for 15 minutes for maintenance purposes. So is that once a month or once a week? I'm a little confused on that.
Perhaps we can defer to the applicant on that.
Yeah, I apologize, I should have asked that question.
Not a problem at all. It's once a week is what I typically advise municipalities to expect, and it's just, it's to run for 15 minutes, and that's called exercising the generator to make sure that the fuel circulates, so that when you really need it, it starts. And it, it's just a very quick 15 minutes, and then it kicks on during power outages automatically.
Okay, so is that still okay to have it listed as workers will visit the site approximately once a month? Because they have to be there when they turn the generator.
Actually, they don't.
They don't?
No, it's two separate matters entirely. The once, the once-a-month reference would be to routine maintenance.
Okay, excellent.
And even in today's day and age, most of the antenna tuning and everything is done remotely.
Oh, wow, okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you.
Yes, Jesse?
And I would also note that this, this application in particular is subject to a condition of approval with regards to a hazardous materials management plan, which is administered by our Environmental Health Department. So there would be a limited number of site inspections as well conducted by environmental health staff to ensure compliance with any hazardous material storage on site.
Is that in the?
That's a limited annual inspection often, but otherwise, I did want to note that in addition to the generator itself, the materials associated that, associated with that would be reviewed by our Environmental Health Department.
And that's primarily fuel, right?
Primarily, correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we do have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Holcans?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Echidah?
Yes.
Chair of?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we now?
Yeah, I'm happy it's serving so many people.
Oh, it's wonderful.
That location.
Yes.
I know people.
Yeah, I always like to say they're not going to cut the copper in San Jose, they're going to do it in our outlying rural counties.
That they're, I didn't.
Well, you know, the phone company would really like to not have to maintain phone lines. They're expensive, and they get stolen. And so it's good to make sure that rural areas are getting coverage, because
Oh, yeah.
20 years from now, there may be no landlines.
That's true. Okay, matters from staff. I think we had some matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Brent Schultz, Planning and Building Services Director, and cannabis. And I just wanted to, we got a, some correspondence from Commissioner Wedeman, a number of questions on housing, and where proposed housing units are in the districts, climate change questions, fire safety, fire season questions, just a whole host of things. And I'm cannabis. And what I would like to propose is that I write, Julie and I, because some of these are out of our areas of jurisdiction, and I want to write a memo to everybody, answer the questions, and then we can, I can meet with you individually and answer any questions that maybe we didn't answer in our response, or any of the attached information, or you can agenda something if you want to bring it up after you see it, it's fine with me. But I'd just like to have some time with them. We've had, with the flu, we had, what do we have, three planners this week? Everybody was gone. I'm like, what happened to everybody? They quit? You know, I hope they didn't quit, you know? And it's like, don't quit. And so it was, but they're getting, they're starting to come back, so that's good. But as we get through this flu season, and I just, I just want to spend some time with some of the other departments and other agencies that deal with this stuff and get a good response back to you, answer any questions.
I, I made copies of what I sent to you and the chair.
And Diana and I talked about this past. What I'm thinking is maybe you could just look at light agendas and try and agenda some kind of a presentation. So when we just have one item, it was great to have the housing presentation.
Yeah, this was great.
Because people come from a long way, and, you know, I don't think anybody's expecting you to answer all these questions in a week. They're, they're just topics. I know I am very interested, I contributed to this list, and I'm very interested to know what the state and what locally we're thinking about changing in light of the fire dangers and stuff like that to our planning ordinances. And I don't really want you to have to talk about that off the top of your head. I'm sure that's all still circulating at the state and the local level. And so this wasn't a thing of, you know, get all these answers together for next meeting. This is more, when we have the time, these are topics that we're interested in.
Okay, so then the commission would like to see us take some of these and agenda them, and then have a dialogue on.
Yeah, every so often when there's a.
When time permits, and, you know, if you have a really full agenda, you don't have to do it at that time.
So I will, I will say, at least we know that our next agenda is going to be rather full, and we have an Airport Land Use Commission hearing in the afternoon, so likely the first you'll see any of these topics would be April.
Yeah. And it's because, you know, when I'm around town, I get asked some of these questions by the constituents, and I just think, I need updates on what's, obviously what different departments are doing things. It's just educating us, really.
I think we can certainly accommodate that, so we'll start ticking off some of these as we move down the list, and you might see various folks from other departments or divisions come in to give presentations on that.
And that's another reason why it doesn't have to be really fast, is we do know that you are going to have to tap other people, and then your schedules need to be considered.
We appreciate your understanding.
And I know that the other commissioners are just getting this copy today, so perhaps you can look this over, and if you have other items that you think should also be addressed, you could just let staff know.
I would say please send any correspondence through Jim, Commission Services Supervisor, and he can be sure it gets to us.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other matters from staff?
That's it?
That's it? Okay, matters from commission?
We just talked about this, but there's something pending for a conference, and I don't know if that got scheduled. You, Jim, you sent an email out to us, or somebody did.
The Oak Woodlands Workshop.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
So right now, we are looking at March 18, which would be the day before the Planning Commission hearing on the 19th. And it would be starting at about 1:00. We'll be sending out a notice to newspapers and such, but really just walking through some of the concepts that we're thinking about within this Oak Woodlands ordinance, and opening that up so the public can attend as well, and we can get some feedback before we bring it, an ordinance draft forward to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So that will be on Wednesday, the 18th, you said?
That's correct, 1:00 p.m.
Julia, can you give us a little more information on what, what's going to be discussed at this Oak Woodland ordinance?
So essentially, what we'd be looking to do is, the staff planner, Vandy Vanderwater, will be taking us through basically some of the general concepts of what we're thinking of bringing forward for an oak woodland protection ordinance. And this would be looking at essentially, we might cover some definitions that we're intending to use related to oak woodlands or heritage oak trees, and then also talking about what type of process we'd be looking at in terms of authorizing. about, uh, what type of process we'd be looking at in terms of authorizing removal of oak woodlands or oak tree species, and, um, some of the mitigation measures that we're thinking about as well, and just getting feedback from the Planning Commission on that, as well as the general public.
Okay, thanks.
So will we have a packet to review prior to that, Julia, or, I guess?
Not necessarily. We're gonna be giving a presentation, so we'll be walking you through it at the meeting, and, and you, of course, pause us at any point and ask us any questions that you may have. If we have that PowerPoint done well enough in advance, we may email it around to folks, um, to start, and post it on our webpage, uh, but I don't wanna commit to that, 'cause I don't have it in hand yet, so.
But we have a full agenda for the 19th, as far as the morning up until, when does the Airport Land Use?
Two, two.
2:00 PM.
Okay. So we couldn't combine it with that, so the people from the coast don't have to make a trip?
No, we really did try to look, but just with the number of items that we have, um, we're just concerned if we'd actually have adequate time to get through all of it.
And is there a deadline for the ordinance?
Uh, yes, so, um, we, the Board of Supervisors directed Planning and Building Services to prepare an Oak Woodland Ordinance when we were talking about cannabis and cannabis regulations, and the, uh, directive was for us to have an Oak Woodland Protection Ordinance in place at the start of Phase Three, which is July 1, 2020 is the present open date for Phase Three, which is for new cultivation sites within the county. So the idea was to have an Oak Woodland Protection Ordinance in place before we allow new cultivation activities within the county. So, um, that is the deadline that we are working towards. If you have been paying attention at the Board of Supervisors level, there are discussions about making revisions to the ordinance which may affect the opening date of Phase Three, but we have no definitive answers on that at this point.
So, um, does this body approve the ordinance, and then it goes to, to the supervisors? Is that kind of the?
You would provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
And so they need it by, at this point, July 1st?
Uh, well, so, um, just to be clear, so we would, first, we're bringing forward the workshop, then, once we have your comments on that, we'll bring forward a draft ordinance for your consideration, then we will look to schedule, uh, we'll get your recommendations, and, um, if we get through with your recommendations within one meeting, then we'll schedule for a Board of Supervisors hearing, and ideally, that would happen prior to July 1st, um, to give us an opportunity for, um, it to become effective.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Any other questions?
I have a question. Forgive me, I could've looked this up. Has the board acted on the Talmage rezoning that the Planning Commission was split on a few months ago?
Yes, they have. So, um, you're talking about the Luke Casey item, um, and yes, so the Board of Supervisors acted on that in December, and they denied the request.
Any other questions for staff or comments from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we have item number nine, approval of minutes of October 3rd, 2019. Have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. All opposed, duck.
I second.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
All right. Very good. Here you go, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.